Keep in mind our federal budget is about, at this time it's about 3 trillion, 3.2 trillion. So you're running a deficit that's literally spending about half as much more as to take in. It kind of worked its way up and uh, last year, or two years ago in 2014, it went to about 400 billion. And then, now it's come back. It's increased more now. So the deficit has increased and well, it's come back down to about 488 billion. We run about half a trillion dollar deficit. And that's something that obviously you can't, won't go on forever. The next slide actually shows pictorially our deficit if you express it, the last slide expressed it just in actual dollars, inflation adjusted dollars. This expresses it as percent of the gross domestic product. And if you look at where we had the largest increase in our federal debt, so it's the total debt, not the deficit, not the total federal debt, as percent of our gross domestic product, uh, the civil war, it went up to about 25% of our gross domestic product. World War II, obviously our largest expenditure, our largest sectors in the economy. Uh, the federal government had to borrow a lot of money in order to win World War II. It went up to almost 100% of GDP. It came down as, as, as World War II ended, we had prosperity. In the 19, uh, in the Reagan years, it actually built up because it increased defense spending. And I can tell you, if we, if you take a time doing this, it's less time a question. If we, if we can have quiet and show respect. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the sound was going to conduct the town hall the same way I conducted every town hall conducted.
Over the phone!
We don't need a history lesson.
Try again. Okay. So if you see it, that's a result.
We're educated people, we don't need.
As your moderator, I've been told that the congressman only has about 10 slides. These 10, these 10, these 10 slides are going to cover some of the things that you're all going to want to know. Health, health people, the FPL, and some of the other things, just like 10 slides. As, as your neighbor and as your citizen, okay, we have a very limited amount of time. I think you, for us, to go through the slides. It's probably only a couple of minutes. You want to get to the question, right? We're here on slide, we're at 75% of the GDP. Our, our federal debt is net now, gentlemen, sir, you have to stay seated. The rules of the college were, sir, the college has the rules. So here we are, we're at 75% of our GDP, but then projected the increase to levels that we haven't even seen in World War II. And I would, I would offer that we are not nearly in the type of situation we were in in World War II. Now that's one. The legal system, we don't do something. Social Security, COVID, and solid healthcare. That's the man. Next slide. So if he went to a silent approach, now what we should do in terms of the ACA, so we have a lot of questions on the ACA. Three noes now. One, protect creative system conditions. You have to make sure that everybody agrees with that. The second one on that slide, one for Medicaid, not Medicare. Medicare will be leaving alone in the ACA. It's very important, it's lower premiums. Next slide. If you look at total Medicaid spending, this starts in 2009, seven years ago, it was over 400 billion dollars a year. We're now at 2018, this year 2018, we're at 600 billion dollars a year. And within seven years, we will be at 900 billion dollars a year. Two and a half times where we were in 2009. Medicaid's spending is the most rapidly growing portion of the federal budget and the largest contributor to the increases in federal deficit. If Medicaid performed well, that might be alright. But in the study published in the New England Journal of Medicine, the only randomized study ever, to look at what happens when someone gets Medicaid versus not getting Medicaid. And look out for two year period, and I don't, you won't be able to read that with bricks too small, I'll summarize. On most, on most alcohol measures, they could detect no difference whether you got Medicaid or didn't. Because our Medicaid program just plain does it for whatever it should do. It was a huge amount of billions of dollars in federal tax dollars.
And give us your insurance!
This slide, and all of us take a close look at this, this actually shows the insurance company profits since the Affordable Care Act was put in place. No matter what they do, they have enough, say enough, American health. All of these companies have, you know, they're paying higher costs now than when the Affordable Care Act was put in place. In fact, if you look at the cost, this is the Canver Silver Level Plan in Eastern Shore area, right here on Eastern Shore. Canver Silver Level, 2014, and the Affordable Care Act first tank into 2020. And I'm just going to look at the age 60, because I'm age 60. So I'm going to look at the age 60 graph. $489 a month. This year, $975 a month. In 40 years, the premium for 60 year olds in the California. Done, done before, we're going to graduate the board. Next slide. In fact, if you look at the 60 year old, if you look at that 60 year old, and you compare what the cost on the 2017 exchange, uh, PPOs in Maryland, the preferred provider, versus the Maryland Health Insurance Plan, which was our high risk pool, wasn't even our home, which was our high risk pool. And then, in 2015, the premiums are roughly 80% higher on the Affordable Care Act. So if we, there are ways, how do I know, to bring down premiums? Next slide. What you can bring down premiums, one of the ways is way, like Maine, which is actually real to the high risk pool, it's called a blind high risk pool. And if they look at the 60 year olds, they brought premiums to make $12,000 a month to $645 a month by the third month. Bringing in a higher risk pool. Next slide. But if you really want to deal with the cost of healthcare, we have to start dealing with the taxes. And as we have to maintain care insurance, so that's important. This slide shows the effect of Alzheimer's and the cost of Alzheimer's to America. How many asked to show hands, how many people know someone with Alzheimer's, someone in their family, a friend, a neighborhood? But this last year, the federal government spent 160 billion dollars treating patients with Alzheimer's on Medicaid and Medicare. 160 billion dollars a year. Projected increase by 2050, where the baby boomers are fully aged to 735 billion dollars. And of course, the graph, a lot of the top shows, and we expect another peak of Alzheimer's, probably in 2020. If you need to have one more time like that.
Eat shit, eat shit! She's a boner! We're all out, huh? Probably time for them to go.
Alright, guys, ready for the first question? Matt Brandon. Congressman Harris, do you still support eliminating the 79 million dollars for the cleanup of the debt?
Good question. The 79 million dollars is, uh, money in the EPA budget. The president, and of course, building up the defense budget, said he wants to, he's implying sales person. Supposedly eliminating the 79 billion dollars.
Are you for it or not?
Okay, so the 79 billion dollars a year appropriated to, in several states that surround Chesapeake Bay, to pay for Chesapeake Bay cleanup. It includes money that goes to farmers and other things. And it's not just Maryland, it's Pennsylvania, uh, New York, very important, because Connecticut waters the bay, that's where it pollution comes. Now, we need, we need to preserve Chesapeake Bay, we need to preserve the 79 million dollars. There's no one disagreeing with that. We need to make sure that 79 million dollars is spent wisely. And it's spent in a way that makes sure that we don't hurt our economy. But that can be done pretty easily. So I will have to pay for the 79 million dollars for remaining the budget. And making sure that that 79 million dollars, that portion, it's a small portion spent in Maryland on Eastern Shore, is spent in a way that again, helps our farmers, doesn't hurt our farms, and the way it is now, a lot of it does.
Helps the farmers.
Those programs that actually help, yeah, for this people. See, yes, the answer is, I support that for this period. And I say it clearly.
Alright, the second question, going to go to the bottom of the body. You are a physician, why have you? I can't read this. Sorry to keep you from writing. True.
Would you vote for a budget hand, where I can completely interpret that? Okay, I'm a physician, why do you co-sponsored, I tell you, doctors read that, other doctors. Why do you co-sponsored a bill that appeals nutrition standards for school lunches and breakfasts and water? Everything that's proven to be accurate is non-proven. Okay, let me answer the first one, it's about HR 610. HR 610 is a bill that addresses the fact that now, that, what it does is it says the federal government has got to get out of the education business because it doesn't help. The best educational decisions are not made in Washington DC and the federal economy, the state, and the county jurisdictions. Here for the latest silver award, the best public teaching students in that jurisdiction. We don't need some, we don't need some of that, it's second to none. Washington is the second one that goes, that goes education, federally goes education, turn it over to the states. There's some states that if, that they have to, they can use it, uh, in poorly performing districts like Baltimore City, for instance, Georgia County, they can do that. How many of you don't know of Baltimore City? I got two here from Baltimore City. You are lucky here, that you don't have underperforming schools. There are people in this state, again, places like Baltimore City, places like Georgia County, where those schools are underperforming, they're failing. And New York has thousands loading those schools right now. I believe in the more private school districts, federal tax dollars, we should like the state. The nutrition standards, okay. So one little thing that happened is, we added, the Department of, uh, Department of Education added, uh, some enhanced nutrition standards to the school lunch program. Now, the problem with that sounds, as a physician, that sounds really good on paper. I mean, gosh, our children just say only healthy food and ate, you know, all their vegetables and all the healthy food. That would be great. That would be, but I have my children. They don't want to eat that food. Although you need to say social capital waste, and after that change in the program. A lot of you just don't eat as much food when you give them healthy food. They choose not to. A lot of the problem with this, and the local jurisdiction has signed what was right, and children naturally, uh, children may have a solid policy.
Alright, guys, ready for the fourth question? Congressman, why do you approve cabinet members whose intention is to scuttle department's examples, state educational garden?
I'm in the House of Representatives, I have to wait for a senator's town hall, Matt. I don't do anything about that.
So the question is, HR 610, I think I already had it.
And citizens united! Say quiet!
Will you still be able to sleep at night if you were to repeal the ACA? When the first people on Medicaid expansion die due to lack of health insurance?
Go back to the power point, Andy!
Let's put a slide off. What is wrong, son? Put a slide off, shield of study. That's the best way to answer that question, about Medicaid. I'm here for you, Chris. Look, it's a meaningful being and truth, that Medicaid, you know, there's a lot of people who are going to go to Medicaid. And the scientific study published in the New England Journal of Medicine, the only randomized study, showed there's no way around it. We need to improve Medicaid, we need to turn back to the states, and the states make the decision what's best for the people.
The next question. You have co-sponsored HR 637, the stopping EPA overreach act of 2017. The bill amends the Clean Air Act to exclude CO2, water vapor, HFCs, PFCs, et cetera. With the exception of PFCs and water vapor, all these compounds have significant potential for global warming. And have climate change and, and I think something risk. On what basis have you decided that these compounds do not need to be regulated?
Actually, the critics of, uh, Maryland Department of Environment. Balance between the environment, there's always a balance that has to be, has to be there. The question is, whether overregulation harms your economy to the extent that you.
It's a lot of red.
Are you all done?
We'll be done with your time!
Let's review, let's review, let's review the, the, you know, climate change. Is climate change, clearly climate change. The question is. Two questions. One is, what are the contributing factors? And another one is, can you alter those factors in a way that would significantly decrease it without harming the economy? I think there are new trends. 3% economic growth, you know, the last 10 years, and I have to say this, in the 10 year period, our growth, our economic growth, modesty 2%. Ever.
Are women entitled to choose their healthcare provider? Will you selectively defund the healthcare provider which delivers only safe, essential, and legal services to women?
Not only women, but men, everyone should be able to choose a healthcare provider. And then remember, we were promised, with the Affordable Care, we like to not be defund because. This should change whatever provider you want. And the children of America is voiding, and taxpayer dollars should not be used to fund abortion.
Will you submit a plea to President Trump for Paul's budget that would slash federal assistance for the Chesapeake Bay cleanup from 73 million to zero dollars? How are we to stop that? Maryland's most precious natural resources, isn't it? And the nation's largest. Okay, this is on the question that was asked.
Get money out of politicians!
That's on 610, I think we covered the question there. Okay, this is, this is the next one. Will you support an independent investigation into Washington?
Alright, so, and right now, investigation's going along, as you know, it's going along. Right, the way investigations, the investigations that have been done, they'll always be done in the Congress itself, because we have oversight. This is the second one, we have oversight on it. That's not stupid, by a bipartisan committee. The investigation, I believe that it's going to be pretty rough. And it's always biased. A little biased investigation, but the first step is always the investigation. So I support investigating, I want to know what they find, I want to hear some testimony, and then I'll decide. Let's do that independent investigations of a lot of things.
Dear Dr. Harris, as the father of a child whose disabilities became a painful shortly after MNR booster, I have been navigating the mental health insurance system for over 30 years. This has been a perilous journey fraught with roadblocks, delays, and divisive projections that have led to numerous hospitalizations. My original commercial insurance was an insult in the face of dire urgent conditions. Finding our way to Medicaid, through Medicaid, was the only way to get my daughter treatment that would save her life. Now many of those hard fought battles can be avoided by the stroke of a pen. Please do not become compliant and sacrifice to my daughter's future.
And then, Medicaid program, remember, covers two classes of people. First of the elderly, sick, and disabled, traditional Medicaid, the poor or elderly, sick, and disabled. And then the Medicaid expansion was the part that is affected by the ACA. Interestingly enough, when we, when we go back in the, in the American Healthcare Act, it actually treats those two populations differently. Because what it says is it actually puts in increased funding, because we actually, when we do the per capita block grants for the elderly, sick, and disabled, we actually increase it by higher than the medical rate of inflation per year. But we don't do that for the other group, which are the non-elderly, sick, and disabled. So if we actually, so anyone who's in that situation where, where you're depending on Medicaid to provide health to the elderly, sick, and disabled. Take a good look at the way the American Healthcare Act actually treats the two populations differently. I would offer that as a society, our first obligation is to the poor, elderly, sick, and disabled. We should restore that, we should make sure that that's, I won't get into it, but in a strange way, the way the Affordable Care was, was, uh, was, was implemented. The, the amount the federal government pays to the expansion group was 90%. The amount in Maryland that they pay for the elderly, sick, and disabled is about 52%. So if you think about it a little bit, when the state hits a, a financial roadblock, and states hit financial roadblocks, and they have to cut back on Medicaid. Their tendency would be to cut back on the elderly, sick, and disabled, because they'd get more federal money from the other group. So if they cut back, they lose federal dollars. We, we are moved and incented to actually take, take a step to the elderly, sick, and disabled. There's summaries of the amended American Healthcare Act in the back, I think there's gonna be another amended this week, but there's summaries of the latest amended version of the, of the, if you want.
This week, you voted to allow companies like Comcast, Verizon, and 13 team to sell their insurance without their knowledge consent. You received at least $3 million towards your reduction from the telecom companies. And the rule is, how can you ensure your constituents that you are committed to protecting their privacy?
Absolutely. Clearly, I was just saying, you had no way I could really.
You sold my privacy, thanks!
Alright, when you, when you sign up the highest paid NS service provider, back in Maryland, they actually tell you what they do with, with your information. And in a, in a free marketplace, you have the choice of going to an NS service provider that shares your information?
Thanks, Andy!
Is there any consideration being given to replace with Paul Ryan?
Lot of green on that! See all that green?
At West House, recently invited to work with the Democrats, will you and your Freedom Caucus colleagues commit to continuing pushing towards such bipartisan cooperation?
Best policy is bipartisan policy, that's the question about. I would tell you the reason why the Affordable Care Act is a mess, and it is a mess because you have. The reason is, is that it passed without bipartisan agreement. So it would create a partisan party to a certain extent, a cancerous stand now. Now, would the, would the fix of it be better for bipartisan, the apple? We have not been able, except a handful of rich crusty aisle, to agree.
Representative Harris, will you support independent counsel or commissioner investigate the Trump campaigns? Will you support USDA funding for development of affordable housing?
Yeah, I do every year. I mean, it comes, it comes from my committee, I'm actually on the agricultural subcommittee appropriations. I support the, uh, the, uh, the federal agency, NFDA, that actually supports rural housing, including affordable housing, I vote for it every year.
Oh, I take a question on my period. Pan Avenue provides valuable and crucial healthcare for thou, for thousands in our district, why would you possibly want to defund them?
Because if you look actually in the district and you look nationally, uh, healthcare, if you want real healthcare, we don't have comprehensive healthcare. I don't, I don't think just the small amount of services the childcare to provide. Trying to accomplish that sort of healthcare, you need support for community health clinics. You have 13, more than 13 community health clinics, childcare clinics. And these, and these community health clinics do things like matrimony, do things like all. And they do it without spending taxpayer dollars in an organization that does abortion.
Do you support any type of bipartisan government, Republican, Democrat, Democratic?
What's what?
Do you support any type of bipartisan government?
Of course, we're in America, we have to come out here. We have a country that, that if you notice, every eight to 12 years actually changes from one president's party to another president's party. We have, on the standard case, and we have this.
It's not only the Constitution, guy.
And this is a lifetime that the, uh, the, uh, the House of Representatives and the Senate have passed multiple times from one party to the other. America likes bipartisan shit, but it's a time. In the House, for instance, you have a majority, in the Senate you may have a majority, presidential, it has to be from one party to the other. The country has chosen. I'm not sure anybody in this room that the country has chosen. And the House of Representatives. That doesn't mean that we don't work with Democrats, we will. If you look, for instance, looking at the vote that Ben Carson had, you know, remember the Senate? The Democrats in the Senate disagree with those votes, because he actually had a strongly bipartisan vote. Several presidents have had strongly bipartisan votes. So on issues, there's gonna be bipartisan agreement, and on some other issues, it's just not gonna be. But that's the way America works. And we should think of it as, it's the best way to imagine the world to have to work.
Where do you stay on the super PAC party in elections?
If we, if we level, if we level the playing field, and, and actually, it's interesting, because I actually, when I was in the state senate, Senator Pitsky was, uh, from Rich George's County. He had proposed a campaign finance reform, but actually going to public funding. And I offered actually co-sponsor with on one condition. That in addition to, to, uh, to disallowing a lot of those bigger contributions, we actually said the labor unions also can contribute. Each mayor, if anybody committed or no one committed, he said that wasn't possible. Now ladies and gentlemen, until we get all the big money out. All the big money out. We should, we have to be careful about limiting some people's ability and not others. So I, I'm the person one to say, if you, if we take all the big money out, let's take union money out, it's, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be all big guys.
The DDA continues to authorize ever larger quantities of opioids, why not cut off the problem at the source? 80% of all opiates produced worldwide are consumed in the USA, why not cut production?
Wow, yeah, well, as a part of that, I don't know, and I'm sure in this, in audience this size, someone has been deeply touched in their family by this opioid crisis, and I mean deeply touched. The fact of the matter is, some people need it, but probably far fewer or less than have been given. And look, that's my, that's my profession's fault in part. Not the first one to admit it, not the first, you know, when we had, for instance, common sense measures, like the, uh, the, uh, drug, the drug, um, mod, the drug programs where, uh, PDMPs, prescription drug. Montra program, thank you, prescription drug montra program, because I remember the acronym, I don't remember the, it's like Washington. So the prescription drug montra program is very simple. When a, when a pharmacy fills a prescription for a narcotic, it goes into the central database. It's protected for privacy and has the patient's identification in it, and identifier for the patient. So the patient goes to another provider, even across state line, and, and requesting narcotics prescription. That provider has a means to look up and see whether that patient is already getting a prescription. This is huge, this is huge, because the drug seeking behavior and belief, I experienced it. You know, as an anesthesiologist, I'd have patients, you know, post op, who'd want, who'd ask for narcotics, because I know they don't really need a narc, narcotic, but they'd ask for it. And I'm always wondering, you know, why they asking for it. Now we have an advance, I'm a strong supporter of that, I'm a supporter of making sure that we can look across state lines, because for instance, in East Shore of Maryland, very important. Because if we can't talk to a pharmacy in Delaware, we can't see what's happening pharmacy in Delaware, it doesn't do us much good. So we have to do that, that's the first and most important thing we have to do, is make sure we can ascertain if someone's getting, if someone's getting a scare. And, and look, and then people, and, you know, again, people want to pressure, they complain, oh, who we have to, but listen, this epidemic, and it's nothing short of epidemic, is so serious. That, yeah, we have to take steps where some people say, oh, you know, I don't, no, you've gotta do it. You just gotta do it. This is not, this is, again, the past, the CARE Act last year, whip pass accident that have made the federal government better in, uh, in dealing with, and giving grants out locally. We have several grants in this district, uh, on, uh, on drug, uh, on opioid addiction. We have to deal with, this is, this is probably one of the most serious public healthcare crises.
Dr. Harris, I am an American, and parentheses of great descent. And my parents entered the US legally, it makes me so sad to qualify myself this way, after living almost my entire life in Maryland. But the rhetoric of your party made that necessary. Are you aware that the Trump administration has changed for a while, a ban, and punishment for sanctuary cities are alienating US citizens? We invite all minorities to show up in this city. How would you speak now against these policies, and what are you doing to promote diversity and tolerance in Maryland?
It's a great question, as you know, for some immigrants, I understand how important immigration is to what America is. But the fact of the matter is, we have immigration laws. And a lot of people who come to this country, like my parents who perhaps did write this question. Come to this country because we are a nation of laws. And obviously, in other countries in the world, and, and it's very interesting, because in other countries, we assume that everywhere in the world, they follow laws, they don't. So what we have to ask the question is, should we insist that immigration laws be followed? I would offer that the answer is yes. Now, should we do it, yes we should, but open, but having open borders and what is, what truly was a catch and release program does no one any good. And if you have, and the people who think that you guys should be sanctuary jurisdictions, we address this here. The only law regarding immigration ever can be federal law. That's the way the Constitution's written, federal law preempts every other, every, and it makes sense. It's the way you should know about whether you're immigrating to Maryland. So the fact of the matter is, is if we have laws, we should enforce them. Now, do we need, do we need immigrants? Yeah, we need immigrants, do we need temporary workers especially? Yes, we do, here on East Shore. Huge needs, huge needs for our, for our agriculture industry, for our tourism industry, for our, uh, seafood processing industry. But the fact of the matter is, we expect people to come here as immigrants, obeying the law. Do I believe in, do I believe in us being an inclusive country? Absolutely, that's what we are. But I believe we have to follow the law, if we don't like the immigration laws, then change the immigration laws.
He can't change him, but you can.
What is your main agenda in the House? What is your main agenda in the House to support and strengthen the middle class? And what would you do to provide support to the working poor?
Uh, look, the most important thing we can do, by the way, and now we're getting closer, I'm gonna, let's go another 15 minutes though, so we have to pay a proper pressure, that's can't. The most important thing we can do for the middle class and the working poor is get our economy going again. The fact of the matter is, you all know, it's been 10 years, we haven't had significant economic growth.
Talk about fake rounds, Andy!
More than it was 10 years ago. The only way to get that moving is get the economy going, so I, I agree with the president, I almost, I was, as they say that in the word of this guy. I agree with the president that we have to get our economy growing 3% or 4% a year. How do we do it? First of all, you bring manufacturing back into this country. The most important way to do it is make America attractive again for business, the way Maryland is made Maryland attractive. The way America is made, Maryland attractive. The economy here, I'm trying to do it. Since he's black. Now I believe the economy is going to be good. We have to go back, we have to look at every regulation we have and say, let's do the balance. It's less than two more hours than we do. Let's go tax system and make sure that we're not chasing anyone out anywhere by tax policy. We've got to get us to a steady economy going. And when our economy was moving at three to four percent a year, we had, we had, we had, we had the media family income going year after year after year after year. That's what it takes. And so the economy is a little high since I was born. The rich will always do well. Even if they have to get the economy going to get the wealth of America.
Donald Trump made lots of promises. Donald Trump made lots of promises, and building a wall was one of them. He promised that Mexico was going to pay for it, and that was a lie. Right now contractors are submitting bids to build the wall, but Mexico refuses to pay. This will make our country's deficit even bigger. Do you support American taxpayers paying this huge bill? If yes, then will you increase taxes on the rich to pay for this, to the middle class and the poor? Do not have a heavier tax burden, laws and services to build something that's worth America.
Most Americans actually want a secure border. They want a secure border. Where we don't have a wall, a well, a well constructed carrier sometime, we say wall, okay. Someone might call it a wall. We don't have a road across from Mexico. And we're not supposed to miss out on the rich. We're not supposed to have a wall. And I was convinced that we would afford a secure border without building walls. And I'll do it, but it has to work. It has to work.
I think he also wants to do that. Do you believe that healthcare is a human right? If so, how do you ensure that all Americans have access to good affordable healthcare? But that way, if you're a sort of a care actor, you're doing it.
My honesty, to be fair, we actually have great hope. And you know, it's a great topic. The question is, how, 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 I don't show a town type of a dollar.
Is it a human right?
What we do, we do is we do it by turning as much of this hospital to the state of the country.
Do you support that a person in Trump releases tax records?
Would you release the tax records?
We did. Do you think Chairman do you think Chairman Newsom sit down and tell you? I have a tough question. How are the ears of American citizens going to obtain the truth? How are the ears of American citizens going to obtain the truth?
I don't say intelligence committee, I don't say on homicide level, it's in corporations. The fact of the matter is, I don't have enough information to know whether you should sit down.
You got enough.
I don't have the security clearance to get that information. The intelligence committee is not doing it. The trained state members, the higher level players, they have access to all of that.
Just give me the snare and the information, sure. He won't share the information.
Chairman Nunes said something about disqualifying from being chairman.
Do you support cuts to the food stamps now and why?
Well, I support, I support the food stamps report. We need to make sure that no one goes to bed hungry in this country. We are working global on the amount of food stamps in the last six years. We expanded it to able bodied single people. Now I'm going to tell you, there is a requirement. I held up, held out for a certain requirement, which doesn't have all states. Then if we get food stamps, we're going to give you food stamps. If you're able bodied single people, so again, it's not a parent, not a child, you're able bodied adult. You have to, you train for a job, look for a job, or get a job. If you're able bodied, single, what is that obligation to ask you to go and try and work?
Watch out. Do you yourself believe in climate change? Do you agree with the President saying that carbon dioxide emissions or human activity are not necessarily a primary contributor to global warming?
Okay, so the first question is, do I believe in climate, or the second is, climate change is current? The second question is, because the second part of the question actually confounds two things. Is CO2 or human activity, animal human activity? Uh, yes, CO2 contributes to it, no question to it, but we don't know how much it contributes.
The number of workers' health there are going to go thirty over two hundred and fifty thousand, we're getting huge tax breaks. While twenty four million people lose their health insurance. How do we justify that?
And, look, I, I, I think that we should, we shouldn't tolerate a solution where twenty four million people lose, and we use lose, but remember, some, uh, some are forced to buy it now. I get it. So they ask the twenty four million people, we must forget it. But that presumes that we can't bring down creating significant. We bring down creating significant, like the show that they didn't make, the corporate stimulus tool. That number is not as high. Now, insurance stuff that is crazy for children, remember, we're just returning things. We're just, we're not going to end up in a bad place. There are just, that's the fact, we're just returning the crisis now. We need a tax supporting country. That's going to be part of it. Wait until the whole country. I believe Americans are taxing too much.
Dr. Harris, how does cutting the budgets of NASA, NOAA, and NIH and the State Department, how does that make America brave again?
First of all, the president's budgets, for those of you who are familiar with article one, article of the key of the Constitution, the president didn't leave it, he put it in budgets for the longest period of time, the Budget Control Act thirty years ago, so twenty years, twenty three years ago. Because the president really has no say where appropriations are. The House and Senate did. So I strongly committed the dozens, we had NIH, we don't, we don't do know, we had, uh, we will, now, one thing we will do is we will increase the defense spending in the White House.
How do you propose that a band on Muslims will protect America, assuming that worst case crimes in the past fifty years have been committed by white activists?
No, I don't support a band on Muslims. The first amendment guarantee is eliminate spring. That being said, what kind of Muslims, like in the world, are ready to allow terrorists? But because our small percentage of these, they aren't there, doesn't mean that they don't commit terrorist acts, and doesn't mean that we should fight to eliminate radicalist terrorists. We should cooperate with Muslim countries who are bringing us to us, and we are ready to agree with us. So, I don't agree with Muslim ban. I would say, I don't think a lot of people in America agree with Muslim ban. But, as we talk to you, I think we should ban again the Muslim countries and other countries in the world to random, random, radical Islamic terrorists.
Coincidence shit is at all time, all time high. Please name some Democrats in the House you enjoyed working with. What issue will you provide one of your Democrats on this year?
Yeah, let me tell you, I mean, Phil, we had, I had, I guess it started last year, I saw him at President Romney. It was an interesting, it was an interesting subject, of course, it's a position, and many of you may not realize, well, all of you realize that we have shortage of transplant organs. Interestingly enough, there was a rule that was actually in law that said that if an HIV positive donor, uh, you know, it could be either a live donor or a deceased donor, wanted to contribute an organ, it couldn't be donated, even to an HIV positive recipient. That made no sense to me. So we reached across the aisle with the House and Senate. We wrote a bill and said, let's get that out of statute. Let's say that actually, yes, we can allow an HIV donor, uh, organ to be donated and placed in an HIV positive recipient. And did the first one on Hobbit, this six months, you know, eight months ago or so, huge step forward. That's the other thing, we reached across the aisle. And this is important, it's all in your own barrel. Now, let me tell you something. Why, what, how did the Congress get so partisan? How did Congress get so partisan? Okay, we just can't map America. Okay, we just can't map America. The fact of the matter is, that now they got computers to draw maps. They draw districts that are either Republican or Democrat. And they've drawn out moderate districts next to one. So, look, and I say, Jerry Maner Twitter. Look, I, I believe in the Bush area of Jerry Maner district. But I testified in front of the Governor's Commission, went around the state and said, let's turn redistricting over to a nonpartisan commission. Not change the district into a nonpartisan record. You know, the strange, bizarre district, like, for example, the third district in Maryland. Uh, and you know what it is? It is, it is famous in Washington, and people say Jerry Maner district is a country. It can't have that. It's not good democracy, and it certainly ends up with partisan.
This will be the last question. I found it's too much gracious stuff to say fifteen minutes later. Hey, in the area of healthcare portion, is healthcare a right or a commodity?
We should have a healthcare system designed to be nice, to provide quality care to every individual who needs help. As I understand, Mr. Harrison people had a good man to set about skincare. Our closest experience of single payer in this country, and I will tell you this, this is veteran, I would ask any veteran to answer. Our closest experience of single payer in this country is the VA hospital. Because of Medicare, you can get private insurance, and most people have that on policies, if they have Medicare, they have. You don't get private insurance, you get VA treatment. Well, we're all flawed, probably waiting lives, if they had worse than that. Plus, our budget, now, if it's smaller out, less likely, they've talked about the opioid problem. We can look at the facts. Veterans are much more likely to get an opioid prescription to treat pain. And it's like, like, persons not in VA system. That's not a system that works. While we have multiple single persons, it's not a mic, but I sure hope it doesn't look like a VA system. I would say I'm moderator of the House of Representatives. I would say I'm moderator, I'm going to try. Of course, in this country, it's not true in a lot of countries, you want to agree or disagree, without fear, that is tremendous, appreciate all time. If you don't agree with me, God bless you, we're going to agree to disagree, but America's a better country around, God bless us.